Great, so we are recording. Welcome to our February 23 curriculum subcommittee meeting of the Brookline Schools School Committee. So hello, and then I was thinking, we do have a couple of attendees. It might be good for us just to quickly introduce ourselves so that people can identify us if they're not familiar with us. So I'm Jennifer Monopoly. I'm a member of the school committee and the current Chair of the Curriculum Subcommittee. And Barbara, would you like to introduce yourself quickly?
I'm Barbara Scotto. I'm a member of the school committee. My term is ending in May, and I am not running for another term again. I just want people to know, so we have some good people running.
Thank you, Barbara. I will note that the last two meetings, you have mentioned this. So you seem pretty determined in your path, but thank you. Unless you want to change your mind. And Susan, do you want to introduce yourself as well?
Hi, I'm Susan Wolfitkoff. I'm on the school committee and the Curriculum Subcommittee.
Michelle, Casey?
Sure. I'm Michelle Herman, and I'm the Senior Director of Curriculum Instruction out of the Office of Teaching and Learning.
Hi, everyone. Kaseyna Miller, Deputy Superintendent for Student Services.
Awesome. Thank you. Great. So the first thing on our agenda is the approval of the January 19, 2021 School Curriculum Subcommittee Minutes, which were circulated. I hope every, has everyone had an opportunity to review them? And does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns about the minutes? I think I'm allowed to do this. I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes. I can do that. Does any, can we, do we have a second? All right, Barbara is the second. So we need to do a roll call vote. Susan?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So we approve the minutes. Welcome to everybody. And the first, sorry, the second item on our agenda, the first thing that we're going to be discussing is an update on academic interventions. And Michelle Herman is going to lead this conversation for us. And then we'll have an opportunity to discuss and ask questions and things like that. And I see also that the Chair of the School Committee Suzanne Fettishfield has just joined us. So welcome Suzanne. We were all just introducing ourselves. We have some, a few attendees, and we are also recording the meeting for the public. So Michelle, would you like to get us started on sort of, the idea here was to talk about some of the academic interventions that are happening this school year, to let the community members and parents know how we're assessing and evaluating where students are at and students who might need extra support. So do you want to, do you want to have a, lead the conversation first?
Yes, Robin, can I screen share? There we go. Um. Hang on, I just have to, whoops. I think, is this it? Can you see this document?
Yes, yes, I can. It's a little bit small, but yes, I can see it.
Okay, I'll make it a little bit bigger. Let's see.
I don't know about anyone else, but my eyes are.
How does that work?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, so I'm going to just give you a second to take a look at this. That is, this is, it all fits pretty much onto one page. And I will provide Robin with the PDF right after the meeting. So I'm just going to take you through our approach. We look at our entire intervention system through an RTI approach, which is response to intervention for the long hand. And to kind of understand what each tier is, is that the first tier is targeted work in the classroom setting. So when students are struggling in general, or have any challenge that gets in the way of their learning, the first, the first approach is to hit it in the classroom and to really keep the student in, in the regular classroom setting. And so all of our interventions start with classroom instruction and staying in the classroom setting. When we talk about tier two, we're looking at what we call a double dose. So for instance, if you're teaching a math concept in the classroom, you would be teaching in the classroom, and then the student would receive a double dose where it probably would take place in the classroom. It might take place in a small group within the classroom, but it's a second dose of the same content, maybe taught slightly differently. And then we go to tier three, and tier three is intensive intervention. So when I talk about the number of students that we plan to see in a tier three intervention, it's between 2% and 5% maximum. And we try to stay between the 2% and 3%. So when we talk about interventions, and we're talking about general education right now, we're talking about keeping students in, really trying to keep them in a tier one, tier two intervention. So I just want to give that framing as a place to start. So what we've shown here, and I just need to shrink the screen, what we've, what we've shown here is sort of the math and the ELA next to each other. So just starting with the math, we're using a number of universal screeners, which we're calling probes and common assessments to identify students that need more support this year. And are, the reason that you see listed there is sort of the K5 investigations and the six to eight illustrative math slash DESMOs. And DESMOs is really the platform that holds the illustrative math work, is that these programs were identified partially because they had this ongoing universal screener access for us. So there are constant assessments that take place that are identified to look at certain skills for students. And so we don't have to necessarily look outside on a regular basis of, through instruction for outside assessments to determine students' needs. So then what that leads to is sort of being able to identify students by content area, subject area. So within, what I mean by that is certain skills that they may need and that they have in common, so that we can identify the right intervention. So you'll see a set of delivery, you'll see the word delivery and a set of resources, it's resources. And they talk about print or digital. Some of our resources are more of a blended model. So a student might spend some time digitally and some time in small group. Others are either all small group, or one to person to person, or they're done through online, full online, or, or person to person. And so you'll see there is all of these programs are meant, everything listed there is meant to support tier one instruction. So none of them are considered a special ed resource or anything to that sense. They're all tier one and meant to be part of instruction. So we'll, I'm going to move over to the ELA for a moment and then be able to just have a discussion with you about these. So in the ELA, in a regular school year, we would use the Benchmark Assessment System, which many of you know, either is the BAS or the BASS. And that is given one-on-one to students throughout the school year. It starts in October and it's done usually by our literacy team, and every student in K to two is assessed. This year, we had to kind of shift that system slightly. It's still based on the Benchmark Assessment, but what it was shifted to is being able to be provided in an online format. And so we're using, and then they're using, as they said, some LLI text pieces and some Teachers College work to fill in for what we couldn't do virtually through the BAS. And the reading skills are identified. Every K2 student is assessed by the literacy team in three to eight students who either were considered at risk last year, have previously been identified, may have participated in a summer program. They're all assessed as well. So from there, there are teams that meet, and they include all sorts of specialist teachers throughout the district, and they're done at the school level to determine and prioritize the intervention. So it's a determined, that's where they determined if it's targeted work in the classroom, a double dose, or an intensive intervention. And we're currently using, the, we're currently maintaining the data in a log format. The delivery this year, and I want to keep it specific to this year, is currently being done in two ways. We have leveled literacy intervention groups, which are known as LLI, and they're 10 to 12 week cycles. We have made adjustments slightly to the cycles based on scheduling and cohorting constraints. So some of this now, or a lot of this now, has been delivered remotely. Additional interventions, so we may identify that students need specific phonics or comprehension work or letter sound ID. And those students are put into another intervention based on those particular needs, and those are 10 to 12 week long right now. So what I do want to say, though, is that this current school year, we've had some shift in staffing across the district. And therefore, it's, it's not, our ability to serve students is not exactly the same at every school. That will be addressed for next year, but that's, that's a staffing issue. And also to know that as we go back into the schools, these groups will look a little bit different because they would be done in person. So I'm going to stop sharing unless you need the document to ask questions for a moment. So this is really the work that's going on this, this year.
Go ahead, Barbara.
Um, I, I know that one of the issues with the Benchmark Assessment has to do with finding the time to test the students. And I also noticed that you said it was being done to the literacy, by literacy intervention people. My issue with that is that if the teacher doesn't do that himself or herself, the teacher is only, is not going to be able to really have as firm a grasp on that child's skills simply by reading a report from the literacy teacher. And I, I think, I, I understand, I understand the time consumption that it takes. But I think reading a report and actually doing the testing yourself are two very different things in the field of literacy in particular. And I'm just wondering what, what, how, how people are feeling about this. As a teacher, I don't know how happy I would be about it.
So I appreciate your question completely. First of all, so part of that is why I kind of structured it to like what we had to do this year versus other years. And I think this year, because of the hybrid setting, it would have been absolutely impossible, especially because we also started out in a remote setting for individual teachers to, to conduct that assessment. But I appreciate your question, and I would, actually, I would like to do a little digging and bring that back, that question back to teachers, because I think it is important to get a sense of how they are feeling about that. I agree, when I was teaching, we did our own, we, we did, we called it the BASS. We passed every student ourselves. And I know different districts have different formats for it. And I also want to, also just agree with you, it is very time consuming to do the BASS. And so that's sort of some, one of the things that we're also thinking about for next year, when students are coming back after this pandemic year. So thank you. I will come back to that, I promise.
And I, I think, I mean, I think it makes sense in this, in this environment that we've had this year, because that would take up a lot of time when you have students in a hybrid mode. So I think that that makes sense to spend that time on the instruction piece and getting the data and information that we can. But I do, I do think it's a very interesting question to think about what that might look like and what changes. This is an ongoing question that we've all talked about. On a larger scale is what things have we learned from the pandemic and the different styles of, of teaching and instruction that work better for us? What changes can we make to make things better for next year, knowing that it is time consuming? How do we balance that? So this is a good time for us to be thinking about those kinds of questions, I think, Barbara, too, about how are teachers feeling? Do they, you know, what is their, the feedback? And they work with their curriculum coordinator and for literacy about how to deliver that, how is it best done? Is it the best use of time? Is there some, is there another form of assessment that might be more efficient? I don't know. But these are just the time to ask those kind of questions before the year gets started. So I do appreciate that.
And to add, add an additional form, because I think that the, what the BASS does is it does provide a leveled reading piece for us so that we know where students are ready to begin. It doesn't provide everything, and that's the same thing, like the LLI is very specific to other areas of reading. And then there's sort of letter ID and assorted other pieces that we address. And then something else that you said also about the, it'll come back to me, something else you said was.
That's cool. Yes. Yeah, we can, if you, if you think of it, we can always come back to that as well. And then I see that Helen is able to join us. So thank you, Ms. Tralupski. I did let people know you were at another meeting and running behind. So I'm glad. We are, we approved the minutes, and we are now on the update on academic interventions. And Michelle will be sharing that document with Robin, and it'll come as a PDF additionally as well, if people want to refer back to it. But the, one of the questions that I had, Michelle, was, I think I actually have two things that I'm wondering about. One is how is the determining need piece of this working in the RLA school? How, how is that working? Because there's no direct contact there.
Great question. Oh, and I remember what I was going to say, based on, based on that question with the RLA. So we have actually learned a lot about interventions this year, especially because being able to deliver some of them remotely and bringing together students from different cohorts in a different way. And so it is something that we are keeping in mind for next year, is how do we leverage what we've used about even continuing to be able to use remote learning between classrooms or across schools to bring students with, with similar needs together. So I think that that is, that's what I was, that you struck that. So Meg actually was going to join us, and then she should, she, we're all back to back today. But she should be here soon. She was going to actually talk about that. So we have at the Remote Learning Academy, Academy added interventionists recently, within the last month. And so that students do have access to this same piece. Every student in the K2 at the RLA was in fact assessed remotely through Joanna's team. And they were also, they run CST team there as well to help support and identify student needs and supports. A little repetitive.
For those community members who may not be familiar, we, I think in education, we use a lot of acronyms that we're very, no, 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 very comfortable with. And, but CST is our child study team. So I'll put my spin on it. I think that it's an opportunity for educators and administrators and special educators, lots of different interventionists all to come together to look at the needs of children and their learning profiles and come up with strategies to help them make progress if they may not be. So it's an opportunity to get feedback and to come up with strategies and ideas that can be implemented. So, so that's great to hear that that is also up and running at the RLA. I, I see that there's a comment in the chat that I wanted to, to get to, but did anyone else have any other questions for Michelle or comments about how interventions are going at this time in this, in this school year? Suzanne?
If you don't mind. So this is, this is kind of a bigger question to me. And that is, so both in math and, and EL, ELA, we tend to kind of, you know, survey or the skills, take an inventory of the skills. But we often don't think about the strengths. We think kind of more deficit. And so, I mean, I'm not looking for us to answer this today, Michelle, but just, you know, we, we are so deficit oriented that, you know, a child gets a tier two because there's a deficit. A child gets tier three because of deficits, when in fact, they have skills and strengths that we probably should be emphasizing and working from. And so that's true both in math, ELA as well. And so it's just, I, I don't know what I expect you to say to that, except I'm just putting it out there that it's important to me that it isn't always, you know, your child has this deficit, or that he or she's not doing well with this. And that message goes to the student as well. And so then we start to say, well, you know, you don't know your phonetic awareness, now that they understand that. So we're going to bring in an interventionist to work with you. And so already in first grade, the child say, oh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not strong in something. I'm not good at something. Anyway, I'm just throwing it out there.
That I appreciate it completely, and I would agree 100%. The data, the data completely supports, for example, the, if you watch the data on girls in math, that the, they are trained by grade two to say, I'm not good at math with no, with no data. So I appreciate that completely. I think what I was thinking about addressing today is the big concern over what is, has not, you know, what, how people are feeling concerned about have, being in such a different model and students falling behind. But I am actually happy to put together the same type of format and come back and talk about working with students' strengths as well, because they're both, they're both important. And I appreciate you calling that out.
Yeah, thank you, Michelle. And also, just to remember that, although everybody keeps talking about learning loss, in fact, kids are learning this year. It may not, may not be exactly what we learned from you, previous years, but kids are learning a lot, and they are gaining some strengths. Yeah.
We're not going to, yeah, we're not going to call it loss. We're just going to call it readiness. Where are you, what are we ready for to move on to? And I think that that's a, that's a lens that, that we've started to adopt.
Yeah, good, thanks.
Yep.
Can I, Michelle, can I add something real quick to just what Suzanne was saying is I think there's the, there are different sides of the same coin. I think the intervention piece, I mean, you have to have both. But I think what you're speaking to Suzanne, and I hope that we can get to this work, is longer term, what are tier one, what does our tier one look like with a strength-based approach? So what, what are the common practices that are across all first grades, no matter what school you're at, to know that any student's strengths will be identified and fostered in a way that, I mean, ideally, we wouldn't need tier two and tier three interventions, right? Because everybody would be, they would know their own learning profile and can advocate for themselves. But I think you, you make a really good point, Suzanne, that I don't want to lose.
No, and Casey, I agree with you. I mean, I think that the way I see all work with the students is it's always about tier one. And we're always starting with tier one and changing our tier one practice before moving into this identification. So.
Yeah, I want to jump onto that conversation. And I know that RTI blocks scheduling, there's a lot there. That, that's a very loaded piece right there as far as scheduling goes, and there's a long history with that concept. But in an RTI model, and it's a response to intervention, that intervention can be that a student needs to be challenged, or is ready, you know, or that more work in like a book club kind of environment can be done for students who are making progress and are ready to engage in literature in a different way, or maybe it's math skills or problem solving. And so when you have a response to intervention, the intervention doesn't have to be deficit based. It can be, where are you at? And so what's your zone of proximal development? And so where, where are you ready for us to push you to? And so I think that's a really interesting way of thinking about, about these sort of tiers, right? And so like levels of need and when kids are ready for challenge. So some students may be, if, when you have a schedule that allows for a block of time dedicated to intervention, it's like a, it's like in middle school, I think they call it in some schools, a wind block, what I need. And so it's like this idea of what I need. So for some students, that might need a stack, a double dose. You might need another go with that lesson, or that math concept, or reading skills. And for other kids, it's more work and more depth work at that level they're at. And other kids are ready for another challenge. And so the interesting part is sort of making groups across grade levels or across schools. And so everyone, the benefit is everyone has that block of time so that you can share students and really work on what it is that students need, what, what is it that they need? And so to your point, Suzanne, it's, it's not always intervention in that, in that way. But I think we did take that lens today for this meeting, because there have been so, so much concern that we've been hearing about as far as, you know, what, what, what school was like in the spring and what it's been like this school year, and it's just been very different. And so we wanted to address concerns about how are we catching that? And what are we looking for? And how are we assessing that? And I see that Meg Messini is here. Welcome, mostly Principal Messini, who's sometimes also a member of the Office of Teaching and Learning, a woman of many hats as well. I think everyone has that. Thank you for joining us. I'm wondering if you could come back to a question we started to talk about. And the question is, how does the determining need part work in the RLA model? And I, and I think Michelle said that you maybe were going to be able to speak to that a little bit for us.
Absolutely. Are you talking specifically about interventionists and intervention groups?
Yeah, how we're deciding, how we're determining. So Michelle had this spreadsheet up, sort of our document up, where we were talking about, you know, the determining need part, and then what the interventions might look like. And so I was just wondering what that looks like in a remote model.
Sure, absolutely. Well, a lot of it is, I mean, as we know, we, we have all sorts of data in the classroom, from assessment to students' working habits, to how they're interacting on and off screen and all of that. So in terms of intervention, our teachers have gotten to know a lot of our students who've been with us most of the year very well by this point in the year, both through their work habits in school, their grades, their, their, how much work they're able to handle, what their stamina is. So I think that in our younger grades, we have that. As well as, you know, with our literacy, we have administered, it's not the BAS, because this year we had to do something else. It's a, I think, an assessment that's drawn from Teachers College and has been adapted to a remote setting. And so for our literacy, we've used that to, to also enhance sort of those classroom observations our teachers have met, made. And then Joanna Lieberman's team came in and met with each of our grade levels and had grade level meetings where we determined in priority order, you know, who should be getting intervention. And it's, as it runs also in our K to eights, it is a cyclical process. So students would go through a certain amount of time with certain amount of intervention strategies with an interventionist, and they would be taken from class to do that and then come back into class as well. Once those, once they have, you know, learned those intervention skills. We just have hired our math interventionists, and we're bringing them on board. They've already met with our teaching teams. And so, which is great. And so they understand sort of the lay of the land of RLA. And they will also be doing intervention. We hired someone that's doing K to four, and then someone doing five to eight. We also have two different platforms, if you will, that we are administering through the math department and through CST. So we have our Alexia, which is going to be given out to students who need additional intervention with literacy. And then Dreambox is the math intervention, and that's directly given out by the math department at Teacher's Recommendation. So teachers play a huge role in, in this, because they're really on the front lines, and they know their students. And in conjunction with working with parents and collaborating with one another, they meet about kids all the time. That's really, I would say, that is the, the process at RLA this year.
Thank you. I had two thoughts that I wanted to, to share. I was trying to take some notes while I was listening. I wanted to go back to one of the things, Michelle, you had on your document, which was the, just to highlight for people that, in particular, the math program that we have, although these districts sort of supported programs that we've specifically chosen, and you mentioned, they have these built-in assessments. And so that's one of the benefits of these programs, district programs or district-wide programs, is the built-in assessment opportunities. So we sort of, we know what we want students to learn. We've got instructions set up for that. And then we have an opportunity to assess them and see if they've made progress towards those goals. And if there's not progress towards those goals, then we can work on either adjusting classroom-wide tier one instruction or looking at a tier two model. And so I just wanted to sort of highlight that that's one of the built-in pieces of some of these instructional models or instructional pieces.
Can I add one thing to that, Jennifer? So one of the things I think it's really important for people to also hear about that is when we use the word assessment, we're not constantly talking about sort of assessments that we took when we were younger, and well, at least when I was younger. And you'd get grades on them, and you'd get, you know, you would get something that showed that you did really well, or something you did really poorly. When we're talking assessments, we're talking about the tasks that go on regularly in the classroom so that to identify, like, what does the student know? So it could be something you do at the end of a class that the students don't even realize. You're taking that information and you're giving them feedback so that they can either change their practice or get pushed to the next level of their practice. So it's, it's when we, when we use the term assessment, we're not talking about things, I mean, MCAS is included in an assessment, but mostly what we're talking about is the regular everyday, it's going, everyday goings on in the classroom. So I just want to click, make sure that that's super clear.
Yeah, I think that's helpful. I think that there's some, you know, informal and formal assessments. And so those provide different kinds of information. But I mean, you know, I think teachers are getting information on a daily basis, lesson by lesson, as they, as they watch student performance. So it's like a constant evaluation process. The other thing I wanted to bring up was the, the idea of differentiation, which is a tier one strategy for challenging students, meeting them wherever they are, whether it's a challenge, or whether it's intervention, whether it's just pushing them to that next level. And I want to sort of, I, I bring that up because I was looking, just watching the chat. And one of the attendees was bringing up this idea, actually, and Suzanne, I don't even know if you saw that, but you sort of brought up that. but you sort of brought up that same idea, um, that, you know, thinking about students who are ready for the next piece. And so, you know, I would love to see us continue to work on building, um, building teacher capacity, I guess I would say, for differentiation, because it is, you know, you're trying to do many levels at the same time. But it is, it is part of tier-one instruction to meet everyone where they're at. And so, um, working to, I think that, you know, working together with grade-level teams or, or content-based teams, you can sort of build, you build more capacity to do more of that work when you share resources and you share ideas. I'm sorry, Barbara, I've been talking a lot. Please, talk.
Um, I, I just, um, just to echo in a sense what you said. I think that one of the problems we run into when we, when we talk about this, and today we were talking about interventions. But we use the word assessments and people begin to think of assessments as something you do to find out what children can't do. But assessments are also used to find out what children can do and whether they are, whether they are ready to re-move forward. So as we're talking about doing all of this assessment, um, my interpretation of it is that our teachers are looking at the children who are being assessed and thinking about what they want to find out about that child from the assessment. And it might be something that is way ahead of what other children in the class might be able to do. But if you are teaching, you are always sort of keeping in mind what all of your children in the class are doing and looking and assessing them daily, all the time. Not in ways that looks like I'm giving you a test. That's not what I mean. But you watch them work and you are assessing what they are doing. So I just want us, when we talk about assessments, to be very clear that assessment is part of teaching. And if teachers don't assess, they are not doing their job. But assessment does not mean test on paper or reading aloud to get a score. It's, it's what you do day by day, minute by minute of the students in your class. So just, just keep in mind that assessment doesn't mean we think people are always falling behind. It may mean we think these people are really doing well and I have to see what they're ready for and where they're going to go next.
Great. Did anyone else have any other questions or comments? Um, I think part of this, and I, I know you touched on it sort of just a little bit, Michelle, um, with the academic interventions. It's just sort of thinking ahead. Um, and it's, we are in a, a budget cycle. And so are there, you know, we haven't talked in depth about what we might need for next year. Um, we did talk about the new hires that we've had for interventionists this year that are coming on board recently. Um, but we haven't talked about whether or not, and maybe this is part of the sort of the next thing on the agenda, is sort of that planning for assessing student progress in the, in the upcoming school year. And so I don't know where, where within the things that we were going to talk about today, you want to sort of address that.
I, I think it's fine right now because I think what we're thinking about for next year is determining and using a team to do this. So this isn't going to be just like the Oteal office making a decision, but working with both Casey's office and some teachers and some coordinators to sit down and determine what information do we need to know on the, the first week of school? And then what information do we need to know as students move on? So I would, I would bring this back to readiness. So what are they ready to learn on the first day? And that could include students who mastered everything this year and are ready to move on. Um, you know, at a different pace than students who mastered most things and still have like one or two things that we want to work with or just where are people's readiness? So one of the things we're going to be doing is bringing group together to talk about this, um, and determine what is the best way to get this information. Now, I will tell you that we spent some time before talking about the BAS. And we give the BAS to every child in grades K to two as a way of determining what's their reading level. So if their, if their reading level is well above the benchmark for that grade, then we want to make sure we're giving them materials well above the benchmark in that grade. So we're going to still BAS every child, but that does not happen at the beginning of the school year. It's inappropriate. And this, the assessment itself is not meant to be used at the beginning of the year. So we need, we are in the midst of starting to determine what is that tool that we can use in the beginning of the year that could do a similar thing, but at a faster pace? Because the BAS is, um, labor-intensive. And so we don't want to wait until it's appropriate time to use the BAS. We will not lose the BAS or give it up. But we do need to think a little more about that, that general in-classroom instruction and how we're going to address, um, where students are at within that first couple of weeks of school. And so that's, that's a beginning piece. And then I think we've been talking about, it's been a while in the district since we've reviewed, um, the structures and the supports that we give for our student support teams. And student support teams can be the child study teams. Those teams can go in either direction. They can go in students that need support or for students that need to be, uh, need more of a challenge in their classroom. And we will, um, so we need to review some of that work as well. And hopefully these two pieces will dovetail together. The idea in doing this is that if we can enhance the tier-one instruction, and again, in both areas, support for students who take longer to learn a skill and support for students who want to be pushed ahead. Um, if we can work through the tier-one, then we will also have less students assigned or brought to the, the student support team. So those two pieces together are our next steps in sort of moving towards next year.
Just, and I know Susan, you wanted, that I saw, just saw your hand, just as a piece of that, for people to know, that's what we had preliminarily talked about, meeting about in March and for our March meeting, um, is coming back to this essential curriculum and talking about the CST process, the child study team process. Um, so though it's just, it's just interesting, those, those two next pieces of work are what we hope to talk about at our next meeting. But Susan, go, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thanks. No, and I, I very much appreciate sort of the, the different moving parts. Um, so just sort of thinking out loud, I mean, it strikes me that the people who are going to, right now, have the best sense of where kids are is especially K through five, is their classroom teacher. Um, and so I'm wondering if there's something that we can put in place, um, that, and if you already talked about this, that's fine, but is there, is there something we need to put in place now before the end of the year that it can be educator-driven? It doesn't need to be sort of a, you know, top-down sort of checklist or anything. But I, I think that that some, I'm, I'm worried a little bit about sort of losing all that institutional knowledge. And then having some very large set of kids who is gonna need something that looks like a child study team. And if it's something like, you know, everyone's gonna have potholes, right? Um, not everyone, overwhelming numbers of kids are gonna have potholes. And so what I can imagine happening is if we wait until the fall to allocate resources in a child study team fashion, it's going to be January, February, you know, September, October, we're going to be just trying to kind of get back into a rhythm. You know, you kind of start doing these things, you know, later, and then it's the holidays and then you're back in January. It's like February before you're hitting anybody but all the most, you know, you know, really, really struggling kids. Um, and we're just like missing huge numbers because we just, child study teams can't cycle through that many kids. So I guess I'm sort of trying to pull back a little bit and think about resource needs, um, for, for the year we're in, um, to try to kind of get a sense of like where kids are so that at least there's a starting point for those first number of months.
Um, I think it's an excellent point. And, um, one of the benefits, if this does become a piece of the ESSR work, is that we actually can begin this year. So I, but I do agree with you that the teachers have the best knowledge. And, um, you're making me think about as part of this team, like figuring out a way to collect some of that knowledge so that they can pass it on to, because also students are going to return from the RLA to eight different schools. And you're talking about, you know, going to eight different, different structures. So I think that that's, I really do appreciate that point and have made a note of it because I think it is something that we need to sort of push on and, and consider.
Yeah, and I think it's just worth asking. I mean, I, I would love it if, you know, teaching teams by grade can come up with, what do they think the right way to document it is? I mean, again, I don't think it has to be one central checklist, but it would be really helpful if all the first-grade teachers could have some way, use some of the extra collaborative time that they've gotten to sort of pull together and say, here's what we think we would want to, um, you know, document how we would want to think about where kids are excelling and what their strengths are and where those potholes might be, or just here are things we didn't even touch. I have no idea. Um, so that that can get dealt with, um, on the other side, um, without too much drama. That's all.
Yeah, no, I agree. And we were, we are going to use teachers as part of any of these decisions anyhow. And I, but I do wonder, I mean, I, I do wonder about a consistent way for first grade to be passing that information because students coming from the RLA, then that's, those teachers are sending out to all the schools and sort of having that consistent piece of information going in, in both directions. But I absolutely agree that it should be driven by teachers. And I also appreciate what you just said is here's what we didn't get to, because that's okay.
Right. And I want to have that be like a part on the form, whatever it is, so that people can just name that and say, we didn't get to it. Okay, now we know, you know?
Yeah, I agree. Okay. Casey, were you gonna answer it?
Yeah, I was just, well, Helen's been waiting.
Sorry.
Okay, um, I was just saying, that's, that's an awesome idea, Susan, and I think this is certainly something that we can do. I'm, I always think about like, how do we, what's the quickest way to filter this to teachers? And I think through, um, through the work of principals and VPs, getting to the teachers. And I think like Meg, just because we have a principal here, do you, how hard would it be to lead your first, I mean, your, any of your grade-level teams to get them to start to sort of record where they think kids are?
Oh, I think it wouldn't be difficult at all. I think they're constantly having these conversations. And, you know, another thought that came to mind is how are we using this also? I mean, this, it, everything should go back to what is essential learning and what our essential curriculum is and like where our students are with that, um, you know, and how are, how are they doing with that? You know, and so, I mean, I think that we're, we're going to have a couple of things. One is going to be that where the kids are at and the other is what have teachers taught this year? And there are a lot of things that teachers have taught. They've developed really great units. And, you know, we want to also catalog that because that's in conjunction with this, this year of trying to bring people together under these important, essential, you know, learning concepts. They've done a lot of work. So I appreciate the question, Casey. Thanks.
Helen, did you want to?
Uh, yes, because, I mean, I hear about what's happening this year and I hear about the fall. But for me, and maybe my assumptions are wrong, that kids haven't, have gotten what they needed, you know, from last year and, you know, this year and are able to just move ahead. But it seems to me that the lack of the talking about how we're going to use this summer for, for which kids and how to, how, where that's going is a critical piece here. It's not just, you know, what, will the teacher next year know what's happening with the student? But, you know, what's going on with the summer programming?
So Michelle, I know when we talked, I think maybe it was last month when we met and we talked about summer school. And there was discussion of, um, of the creation of a, of a team of people who are going to be working on this specific question. And maybe, and that's a great question, Helen, because we have talked about it before. It'd be great. I know we didn't put it on. But as part of this conversation, I think it's very relevant, um, to just sort of get an update on where that team is at and, and where, what's going on with it.
Yeah, so we are meeting tomorrow, actually. It's not the first meeting, but we are meeting tomorrow. And, um, there are multiple different things happening for the summer that, um, I think, did we say we were going to come back to the next meeting with that as well, with an update?
We can, I, I think we should do a, like a more formal update at the next, you know, we talk in it for the next meeting, like a more formal one. Did, you know, and I'm wondering, Helen, if some of the questions that we had asked, and, and please jump in, we're sort of, how many kids can we service? How do we determine who those students will be? What are the criteria for sort of qualifying for summer programming? What are the different models? What's the budget for that? Um, and so.
How do we make it fun?
Yeah, yeah, we talked about how to make it interdisciplinary, how to make kids want, you know, enjoy being there. Um, and so this is an opportunity as a sort of a springboard, thinking about that essential curriculum and interdisciplinary learning. And so I'd like to, to docket that sort of summer school update, since you're meeting tomorrow for our March meeting. If, if that's okay, to sort of get like a more formal update of what that, what the programmatic plan is and what the budgetary implications are. Does that sound okay?
Meg, is that okay with you?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, no, we are the, I mean, like, there's a lot, yeah. And we are looking at the summer slightly differently. Um, I know that we're trying to, you know, address as many students as we can. And so I think it would be a good conversation and it would follow up. And I also think that to Susan's point about collecting, starting to collect data in a just slightly different way is also going to inform that summer work. So.
And that sounds, that sounds great. And I, I, it keeps coming back into my head. So I'm going to get, I'm going to get it out of my head and I'm going to say it out loud. And it's just, uh, it's like throwing, we, in my house, we call it throwing spaghetti on the wall and seeing what sticks. But, you know, one, one way to think possible way, and I love the idea of getting teacher input. We need to know what they're doing, what they feel like they've addressed. And like, I think that grade-level teams are a great way to sort of approach that work. And we've talked some about vertical alignment and also, um, sorry, vertical alignment and horizontal alignment as well as part of the essential curriculum work. Um, but in getting teachers to sort of, with curriculum coordinators perhaps, thinking about what is it that we've, that we've done? Um, and then, you know, it could be something like a met, not, not met, um, or, um, partially met kind of, you know, dropdown spreadsheet where teachers can go in and say like, within this strand, you know, oh, this student has met this, not yet met this, um, if, you know, partially met. So where there's, they're half, they're sort of there, they're almost there, but they could use a little more work. And just as a way to sort of, I do think it would be helpful, especially we've got these students coming from the RLA who are going back into their, you know, home schools, um, or their zone schools, however, we want to talk about that. And, and, you know, the teachers may not be in a school to talk with one another about that particular student because you, they, they may have had their instruction from a, a teacher at Lawrence or at Lincoln or, or wherever. And now they're going back into another school. So it's just a little bit more challenging to communicate that information. And so some sort of consistent way to record that data across schools, I think, would be really, would be helpful. That can be, you know, delivered to the next grade as part of that, um, vertical alignment.
Yeah, and I, I think to your point that the teachers can definitely identify like, what's the best piece of information that they could pass along? Because they also know what they want to receive from other teachers. So I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, it'd be helpful, I think, you know, for second-grade teachers to know what happened in first grade and where those kids are at. And that's really helpful on the ground. And if, if that can be done in the spring, I think to Susan's point, to get before the fall. Um, and we have that. And it also, like you said, informs what could be happening this summer. You know, what students, you know, do we really need to target? So, you know, that is going to take, I think, some work. But, I mean, it will hopefully feed into the larger project of, of working on what we consider to be, you know, the essential curriculum and not a definitive verbatim, you know, we're going to read from a TE kind of thing. But it, uh, what are, because I think people hear that and they get nervous about what does essential curriculum mean? And so I think that that, you know, can be part of our March conversation again as well. But it, it's what are we, what do we want to make sure that every, every child in second grade learns in math in, in a school, no matter what school they're at? And, and how that gets delivered is going to be different. And in every school, every teacher is going to be different. But what is it that kids need when they leave eighth grade to go into ninth grade math or ninth grade science? So anyways, I'm sorry, Susan?
No, I completely agree with that. I would just add to it that, you know, right now, I, I can imagine that if we're trying to do that, if we start trying to do this on June 1st, everyone will have a complete sort of brain meltdown. But we have four months of school left. Like, we have four months of school left. And so it just seems to me that if a classroom teacher, again, I'm sort of mostly thinking about K-5, but also 6-8, you know, can kind of think about the kids that they have and say, just roughly, where are they? And what is it that I'm not sure of that I need to check in with them? Because over the course of four months, I will be able to figure that out. I may not be able to figure it out over the last two weeks of school. But I can definitely figure it out sort of now. So, um, yeah, I just, I, I didn't mean to frame it as something that happens before school ends because that sounds like June, but I'm almost thinking like pulling it forward so that the, so that educators have more time to sort of figure that out. Because I think, again, no, no one is talking about sort of memorizing facts or, or anything like that. It really is about those skills. Um, so anyway, uh, plus I think the parents would really appreciate it, um, to say like, fine, you know, here's where your kid is. And here's some things, if you want to work with them over the summer, you're not going to summer school. Here are some things to work on, like for, you know, for when they're reading, they're really, they're, they can decode, but they're not really good at making inferences, or they're not really good at predictions. Or I haven't noticed them, you know, being able to sort of do the bottom of the wheel, however you say that in English. Um, and so when you're reading with your kid, here are some things to think about. That's it. I think parents would be delighted to just have those little things in their minds. Um, so that, again, we're not going to be able to get everybody through summer school either. That's all.
No, and I think also. No, and I think also to, to kind of keep pulling all of this together, because I think what this conversation is doing is pulling together that all of this is about tier one instruction and regular instruction and knowing your students and knowing what's happening with them is eventually, like a year from now, this will also lead to us being able to update the progress reports so that they represent what it is that we actually want students to learn. And this happens in every district. But I think like, Susan, to your point where you're actually pulling out right now and asking to like, think about is what also should live on our progress report. And so eventually we can get it there. Yeah. But it's, 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 you know, it's just a matter of the time and, and the ability to do it.
Right. But I've been on the school committee for 14 years and I think we've been working on those progress reports for 10 of them. So I hear you. I think you're totally right. Um, so maybe even just the work that's happening now can accelerate that process.
Um, teachers and coordinators are ready for that process to excel. Because it's really hard for a teacher to be working towards a set of goals and then look at the progress report and say, this doesn't match the goals that I'm working towards. And it has happened in every district I work in, I've worked in. So it's not, it's not unique to Brookline, but it's also when they do get that aligned, they feel really good about what they're doing. So I want to give that opportunity.
Okay. But that, but that is, and I just want to highlight this, teachers have to be involved in this work. And in, of every school that I've ever worked in, we have had teachers look at the um frameworks and discuss them because then they internalize them and they're really part of this creation. But that has a budgetary implication. To get people together on a committee or on, in a working group to be able to unpack those and to, to really make them into that document that Michelle is referencing is so important. And I'm very product driven and I think like, we can do this, you know? But we, we need to be realistic about, but also getting people time for, for teachers to do that. And maybe it is during, you know, one of these early release days, we can start doing, um, doing that work, Michelle. We can pull a committee together and ask teachers, that could be one of the professional development options. I mean, I, I think it's really important and something that it benefits everybody, especially kids and parents, but definitely teachers too.
Yeah, absolutely. And I just, I would wonder if, you know, given sometimes that that conversation is not only really hard and time consuming, as you just said, but it's also, you know, it can get politicized, unfortunately. Part of what I'm wondering is if there's a way, as you think about the time being used over the next four months, just to sort of say, all right, so let's just, let's just do it. Let's make the path by walking. Let's not, you know, set up a whole three year program review to do. Let's just say, okay, so what is it for the end of this year? Um, because my guess is that if there's that consistency will really help people so that when we do try to, I don't know, bring the bulldozer through a year from now, at least we've got a lot of, you know, track laid, um, not to kill this metaphor.
No, 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 I, I agree. I agree. And we, we have a little bit of S or money left also to, um, so that's meant for the supporting this. And we've been using it this year to help have teachers help work development after school. And so we'll continue to use it. And this is, could be the very logical next piece.
Great. Thank you. I want to sort of echo that, like the sense of urgency that I feel. I feel like this is my third year, almost three years now on school committee. And I feel like we, and, and there have been lots of things that have, there are lots of really legitimate reasons for why this work gets diverted because, you know, there's, there's COVID, there's, there's, there's lots of things going on. There's lots of pieces of this. And part of the, part of it is the conversation about you know, time on learning and minutes and interdisciplinary work. It's the essential curriculum, it's progress reports. To, to me, as we've gone on, I feel more and more that the work is really urgent on the essential curriculum. Because if we don't, that's the foundation that the progress reports should feed right off of. Like, that's literally just translating those into another, into a digital format where people click boxes. I mean, that's the, the core and that, that informs our instruction and informs our assessment and informs. So like, without that piece, it's very hard for us to make progress. And I, so I guess I just want to emphasize like, I'm so like eager for us to like form this group in the next couple of weeks. I just feel like if we don't do it right now, we're going to be two months down the road again and and we're not any closer to the goal.
And they're, they're working, the curriculum coordinators are working, and I think it's a matter of bringing it forward to you. And well, I already told them this past week, last week, uh, two weeks or whatever, I said, this is the next piece. And we're going back to school, you know, to subcommittee. So they'll be, I, and I think they'll be excited to show you what they're thinking about and what, and it's all been done. It'll all, and all continue to be done with teachers. Even if, just so you know, even if it's something that like, they start with an idea and they bring it to teachers and it's tweaked, it's if the teachers sometimes can change, you know, provide tweaks that change the whole look. And that's absolutely fine. So um, and that is how, I mean, that is happening.
And, and I, that, that's great. And I know I'm really looking forward to that March conversation to like, really sort of see like, what is the timeline? Where are we at? What progress have we made? What's our plan? When do we think, you know, like, what does the timeline look for this work? Because I, I do think it's so important. Um, maybe even, even more than it was before. Um, so I'm, I'm excited about, about that conversation and, and talking about that.
Um. We have a great entry point for it. So now's the time.
Yeah. And I think the other thing I was going to say is that, um, and I don't know if this is a, a little bit of, maybe Susan was saying this, maybe she's not. I don't want to put words in her mouth. But the, the feeling that I have is that we can always make changes to this.
Yes.
But I don't want the enemy, they, I don't want perfect to be the enemy of good. Is that the right saying? Like, we can make changes to this. We can say, well, this is what we think the essential curriculum is right now, and this is what we want. And then in six months or in a year, you know, like, maybe social studies is like, no, 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 we, we need to adjust these, we, we need to change these. And so um, you know, it's not set in stone, but we need to have something. And I do think it's not, and it also is helpful as a school committee member. When you're, I'm sorry, when you're talking about sort of curriculum coordinators bringing something to teachers, it is helpful sometimes to have something to react to. As a school committee member, getting a proposal or something is very helpful in being able to react to that and say like, I like these things. I don't like these things. So I think it might be helpful to teachers too, to have something to react to, whether it's, you know, a suggestion or a proposal. And then having teacher feedback. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And Jennifer, something you said also, just to, you, you keep sparking more things, but something you said also that's really important. Curriculum documentation should always be fluid. It should never be static. So I think like reminding people that it's okay to constantly reflect and say, whoops, that was a great unit. That one didn't work. This, this instruction got students to a certain place. This one didn't. And to have that flexibility so that every year you get the opportunity to either add track or leave it alone. And I think going in with that thinking is really important.
So I feel like I, I dive, we sort of digressed with the budget piece there in the middle. And so I, I don't want to take away from the time that we have um, to talk more if you want about the plan for assessing student progress next year and sort of what thoughts are about that. And, and do anyone else, does anyone else have questions or comments that they want to talk about now? All right, we, oh, Suzanne.
This is tangential, but it's related to the budget, and that is the role of coaches. I think that that's going to come up. And um, when we look at the budget and I, I think you can make an argument for coaching the teachers uh, goes to what Jennifer said about a teacher capacity. And that that would uh, expand our ability to differentiate and to understand what our students need. So I, I don't know, it, I don't know how many coaches we have. I don't know if we have them both in math and ELA and um, what roles they play. But I, I think it's I, I think it's something to think about when you talk about interventions, again, whether it's an intervention to fill a hole or intervention to push somebody ahead. Um, so I'm just throwing that out there.
Thank you. No, that's helpful to hear.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, I mean, those roles can also, I mean, it depends on how we think about those roles and what sort of the job description is of, of that and, and the goal. But you know, there's, there is the ability to say that that's a way for us to build teacher capacity and differentiation because we, that's the goal that we want to have. So we want to use that as professional development to help teachers. Not that they don't, it's sometimes just a matter of time and, and not a lack of understanding or desire to do it, but a lack of time to do it, the capacity to do it. Okay, so plan for assessing student progress. Is there anything that you want to cover that we didn't cover already?
No, I, and I, I think, I think Susan sort of added a little extra layer to our, our plan. I mean, a piece to what we would, would, should be doing. Um, and like I said, it's about determining like, what is it that we need to know at the beginning of next year? And so we're just at the beginning of stages of planning, but we do have um, an idea of using some, not, and it, it probably isn't a huge chunk of S or funds to support this work.
Yeah, I think anything that has a budgetary impact, the sooner we know, the, the easier that will be. Because I do think summer programming has a big budgetary impact. And then if we're talking about any other sort of assessment models, that's a budgetary impact. If we're talking about, um, you know, the way we use coaches and interventionists and how many do we need? And what does that look like? That has budgetary impact. Um, there was something else I was going to say that has a, has a big piece of that too at summer school. Next fall, you know, if we're talking about purchasing additional like assessment tools or how we're, what that might look like. Oh, and then what it's, what we need to set aside to, for the work for teachers or a member, whatever, the working groups to, to do this work. You know, that, that takes time and time is money. Helen?
I'm not sure if this is part of your bailiwick or part of Casey's or combination, but I'm also thinking about those kids in RLA who have not been with other kids for a year and a half, for the most part. And how do we help them through the summer get them to interact with kids and be with kids so that come the fall, we don't have a lot of school refusal, so to speak. Um, and that they can feel comfortable coming back into buildings.
Before
I'm not, okay. Go ahead.
Right. Oh, we've, we've started to, to have that conversation. I mean, individual principals have. Um, so for example, um, in talking with Dr. Seville's at Heath, you know, it, it, while the kids have been in RLA, they're still connected to homeschools through some clubs and through some activities. But we've, we recognize too that there needs to be some more connecting. And so for example, Lawrence has recently reached out to RLA and is having monthly grade level meetings where our students, RLA students who are also Lawrence are invited into those um, those meetings to start, start to re-acclimate. But the physical piece also has to happen too. And I think that, um, you know, because we're in the middle of budget season and we have, always have 15 things on our leadership agendas. This is going to be something though, that we, we do talk about because parents are also really concerned about the reintegration of their children to their school communities. And whether it be like one activity or multiple activities, I just want you to know that the principals, individually, we've been kind of talking, we haven't talked as a group yet. I was going to ask Casey and Michelle about that. Once we get, dig down into, get past the budget, budget stuff, but we absolutely have to focus on that for the kids.
And, and you may want to try and do it, you know, before uh, the fall. You know, to find, maybe the last two weeks, we save some monies from teachers and do some fun activities with kids, you know, in groups at their school buildings. Something to, to help these children. Um, uh, Susan, you can tell Zachary, I see the, the cat. It's okay. Sorry. To, to start to, I, I wouldn't want to leave it till September when everybody's back and it's a big group, you know, starting to have them come to the building when the building isn't totally full. You know, those sorts of things.
I think it's a great
I'm sure you've thought about.
Yeah, I mean, in addition to what Meg is saying, I know that Maria Litas has started uh, just very initial conversations with guidance counselors to think through this, but more on the, um, I mean, curriculum is too strong of a word, but thinking about how do we structure it in a way for like you, like you said, Helen, like there are some kids who haven't seen other kids in fourteen months. Um, and so just putting them under a tent and saying, yay, you know, I think we have to be very intentional about it. And I know that guidance counselors have kids on their radars um, throughout even for RLA. And so maybe it's starting with those students and thinking about how best to prep them and then
And maybe integrating them into the summer programs that we're already going to be doing. You know, not necessarily for the catch up in terms of, uh, you know, educational stuff, but in terms of the S, SCL stuff.
That's interesting. Yeah, to build in just those social opportunities.
And have, you know, those kids be able to attend, you know, a week or two of the, of the programming. You know, if, if you're doing project based learning, so they're there for one project, something to, to start getting them back into buildings with other kids and feeling comfortable.
Yeah, I wonder if we can talk about that too, Meg, over the summer, because Brookline Rec already has natural events built through the summer.
They do. Absolutely.
Yeah, thanks.
And I just wanted to bring up, I'm just following the chat as we go. And um, we have um, a community member, an attendee bringing up an idea, um, talking about therapy team and therapy dogs and, um, you know, some volunteers. And so she just want to respond and in the public meeting about who could she contact? I would recommend, I mean, my, would have been my recommendation to contact Maria Litas. Um, and so do, do you all have another suggestion of who to contact?
Maybe Maria and Casey.
Okay.
Yeah.
So thank, thank you, Susan, for the suggestion. Um, I will try to, maybe I can can somebody put Maria's mail in the message to Susan? Because she's asking for contacting me. She, I mean, it's on the, it's on the website, but it's easier to, if we could just give it to her now, if somebody knows it by heart, that would be helpful. Okay. The last thing that we were going to talk about, and we, we have a few minutes left before our time is up, was an update on time on learning, which uh, the conversation is, is evolving and shifting um, quite, quite quickly now. And we're really sort of on to another, another piece of this. Uh, but I do think it's worth doing just a quick update. And specifically, we were thinking about the idea of the 35 hours over the 10 days of learning and making sure that all of our, we're have, we have consistency across our schools and making sure that, um, all of our students are having the minimum of 35 hours over 10 days. So did you want to speak to that a little bit, Michelle?
Sure. Um, yeah, I just want to speak to like, because we, we get lots of questions about concerns that we're not meeting it or um, concerns that the content in it is, hasn't been enough. And so I just want to give an update just on, um, just on where we're at today. So we are submitting another report. The report originally was for February 12th, but they haven't completed the report yet. And we've submitted it. And as you know, in the spr, in the fall, when we were there, the high school came back as not meaning its hours. And that was, the high school was in the remote, remote side of things when they did that. So they actually needed 40 hours a week and, and that was a piece. So right now we have received just notification, just to share with you of our very original set of data that we just put in, that we still have some work to do at the high school. And we are working with the state and the high school team to make sure that we are meeting the, not only just meeting the hours, but doing things that are good for the students. And so um, there was a concern that we weren't going to meet the total number of 935 hours for the year. And so we're working on what structures we need to do and how we support the high school to make sure that that happens. And so I just want to be totally honest that that has come back. And so our state report's going to take a little bit longer to publish. And that will happen, um, hopefully within this week, that all the data will be, be um, identified that has to go into the state. But on the other hand, in the, in the positive thing is that we've been working really with all, all the K to eight schools. And we've done some really, I think, things that are really supportive of students. And I'm hoping that people are seeing them in the classrooms. We have added simultaneous streaming. And I know Helen just laughed, but one of the things that, um, the simultaneous streaming has done is allow for more natural side classes, for more natural classes for students who are at home and students who are in school to be do, participating together. And the Alchemers have made their ways to the eight, to the K to eight schools as well as the high school. And so people should be seeing that all over. In addition, we have moved some classes that were um, asynchronous on the remote days to becoming synchronous on the remote days. And that's included a lot of classes like the, the world languages and um, some intervention and wind blocks. So what I need being, um, most, most mostly student driven. In addition, we have moved a few of the specials to the remote time so that students have more interaction and face to face time with their teachers without losing that, that face to face time when they're in the building. And so those are just some of the things that we've addressed. Um, I have worked with several families to hear what the concerns are and to try and address them and make sure that we're we're moving them and, uh, um, and meeting the needs of their students as well. So I wanted to give an update and to let you know that we are still working with And meeting the needs of their students as well. So I wanted to give an update and to let you know that we are still working with the high school. We haven't quite met the, the structured time on learning. Where, I think we're really close and I think we're going to figure it out, but, um, we did get that information back today.
Do folks have questions, thoughts? They want to talk about? So, all right, so that's good to know. I, um, hot off the presses about the high school and it's good to know. Um, that we're making progress. Um, you know, we, we should be meeting the thirty-five hours over the ten days in our, our K eight schools. And so, uh, you know, I just wanted to. To remind community members or parents if they have concerns about particular schedules to. Um, reach out to, to teachers and, and get feedback and add, you know, ask questions and perhaps. There's lots of different ways about that. Did you want to add something before?
We're meeting the thirty-five hours now at the high school over the two weeks. I think the issue is. Meeting the nine hundred and thirty-five hours for the year and, and so we have a little bit of work to do to sort of. How can we support students to make sure that we've given them enough instructional hours to, to get at that? And so I just wanted to be clear about that.
And part of that is because of the remote model at the beginning, which made it forty hours instead of the thirty-five. And so there's sort of a cumulative effect over the total. Time of the year. So to be.
Yes.
Okay, so they're at thirty-five hours over the ten days and the K eight models are all at thirty-five hours over ten days. So. You know, so that is our, that is our understanding, um, at, you know, as a, a school committee, as the. As the district itself. And so if there are any. Concerns about that, again, you know, reaching out to teachers and principals, um, to sort of clarify where those hours are and how they can be found in the schedule. So. Um, to give, you know, educators an opportunity to respond to, to that and to clarify for families where, where those thirty-five hours of live time are coming. And they can look different ways in different schools. Um, and so it's live instruction and, um. You know, that's not always, I guess I would put my two cents, it's not always just teachers talking at students, right? It's, it's students working and, and. Being live with their teachers and that interaction and being able to get feedback or ask questions is also part of that thirty-five hours. So. You know, if people have questions, please reach out and, and contact to clarify. Any other questions or comments or thoughts about, you know, the academic interventions next year, you know, any of the budgetary impacts or any of the time on learning stuff? Does anyone have any other questions before we wrap up?
On that one, I think it would be helpful if in his, um, superintendent's report or somehow we could just let people know that that's coming down the pike so that it doesn't surprise people. The time on learning. I got forty-five minutes. I think I can get to.
Great. That's great. Can you network with him, Michelle?
I.
Talked to Dr. Marini. That would be awesome. Um. So I think the only other thing I think we have on the agenda, yes, we do. We have new business on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to introduce new business? Um. The only piece that I would bring up is that in March, you know, we would like, the proposal is to talk about the essential curriculum progress. This, the child study team process with the goal of that being. Well, I guess, and my, my question or what I would like to know more about is what is that process? What does it look like across all of the different schools? And, you know. Is it possible that we have sort of a streamlined process that's consistent across schools, you know, a forum with information? Or how can we make this an inefficient and effective? Process? And so that was, that's part of that. And I guess the summer school update. So the proposal for our next meeting would be an update on the essential curriculum process. Uh, the C S T teams and summer school unless other folks have other ideas or concerns, Susan?
Yeah, so the one thing, um, that we had been talking about was what to, sort of how to bring in some of the findings in particular from panel three. I think, you know, there's a lot there and I'm not sure my summarizing it, um, or Michelle summarizing it, even though we've both worked. Pretty closely with panel three is sort of the right approach. I think they should probably, um, you know, while we're still in. Budget season, um, have an opportunity to talk about. The things that they've found, mostly because I think that there's just some really helpful ideas in there. Just in particular around, and, and there are resource implications to some of them about how do we think about, you know. Combining all, everything we've learned synchronous and asynchronous, you know, going forward. How do we think about? Again, going forward educator competencies around digital learning and self-assessment tools for, for that. How do we think about? You know, the technology tools and supports and a professional learning community for educators around digital learning. Um, and then how do we sort of track that? Um, and how do we, how do we continue to engage the community? So. I think that because those recommendations are to. The school committee and to, I mean, they're sort of the administration basically, um, and it's ours to do. Um, I just think it'd be really helpful before we get too far down the road to. To hear their thoughts on that. And I know we were going to do it in November and December and January. Um, and I, it just, there's so much going on, but I, I want to make sure we don't miss that opportunity.
So this, so this is great. And I was actually had it on my list to, to, um, send it an email to like ask more. Not having worked directly with panel three, I think it's just helpful. It, I, I'm just trying to figure out. Their advisory. So are they advising us as school committee or are they advising the district?
Well, I mean, we impanel them, you know, the, they're advising the district, but in, in these purposes, it's kind of all the same, by which I mean. You know, to the extent that, you know, we, we need to define educator competencies and the school committee doesn't do that. That would be something where we would say, yes, that's an important thing to do and we would, you know, and the administration would do it. We say, we want to make sure that there's, you know, more, um, you know, uh, what's the word? Sort of synthesized. Pages for professional development. I don't know, whatever it is. I think there is something where, where the recommendations would kind of come to us, but then it's the administration that would sort of do it and report back to us. It's not, we, we wouldn't do those things.
So do the recommend, have the recommendations or would the recommendations go directly to the district? And then would you sort of be, I guess, I'm just trying to figure out what are like. And this is a question actually, Susan, you ask a lot. So like, is this something we're voting on? Is this something that, what like, what is our goal in, in having the panel come? So.
I'm just trying to. Findings. Um, I mean, they, there's a survey, there's sort of a whole lot of time that they spent, um, doing work, um, with. Not only Michelle, Scott Moore, some other folks. Um, and I think that there's some good lessons. So some of it is just inform and update. But I also think that there are some decision points for us about, you know, how do we think about, you know, what? What success looks like even for, for this realm. We don't, we don't have a, a lot of. Um, structure or frameworks around our digital learning. Educator competencies or our tools or kind of, or, or, or much, right? And I think people have done so much this year to kind of define a lot of it. Um, as we go, the make, make the path by walking metaphor. But I do think that there's a lot in there of us to say, all right, well, there probably does need to be some sort of assessment of. What's working and what is it that we want to carry forward into next year? You know, curriculum probably does, you know. Lead the review of this, right? I mean, it doesn't really land anywhere else. Um, and that there's, you know, a fair amount of, um, how, what, what needs to be in place. Um, on this in particular, especially as we think about, um, the, you know, if R L A really is going to as an entity. Um, not get budgeted for clearly, there's still going to be, you know, disruption and digital learning needs in the fall. And so really just kind of thinking about. About how we're doing on, on, on implementing some of those things and, and what the resource requirements would be to do it. Um, so that's what I'm saying. I feel like it's a, it's a presentation to the school committee about here are kind of the. High-level observations and then some of the specific recommendations. And then, you know, for us, I think having a conversation about them. And then if there's sort of thoughts for, you know, the superintendent for the, you know, for, for Michelle, the other leaders, Meg, the other leaders in. You know, teaching and learning to kind of take forward, then I think that's, that's theirs to do, right?
So would you say that, um. That the subcommittee, the subcommittee is the best place for that? Um, or is this something that should go to the whole school committee? I just tried to clarify that, like, who needs this information, you know, the detail?
Yeah, my sense is, is that if, I mean, it's, it's up to you guys. I'm not, I'm not the chair of this or the school committee, but if it were me, I think I would say that. You know, the panel three should probably spend an hour with curriculum, going through their observations and their thoughts. And, you know, Michelle obviously worked closely with them and she has a lot of thoughts as well. And then we can decide sort of jointly what to do with it. Um, and where are there places where we, you know. Within the budget that we already have, here's kind of where some of this would live. If there are things that we think as a school committee are, are important. That need to kind of get brought back to, you know, Jim, Mary Ellen, the budget process, the budget managers, then we should probably elevate those. Um, so I think it, it would start at school committee. My guess is that at some time, and I don't know Suzanne, I know. We've talked about this a number of times, but at some point we still need to kind of bring. All four of the panels to school committee to kind of at least tell us. What their findings have been and what they've been working on because I think first of all is respectful, but second of all, I think. People kind of have only heard bits and pieces of it. Um, and I think it's just important to sort of synthesize all that. But for this in particular, I think it's probably an hour at curriculum. Digging into what they've said and then figuring out where it goes. Um, which is a little bit different from all of the panels reporting out to school committee in a slightly more condensed form.
So I totally hear you and I know a lot of work has been put into that. I'm just trying to look at the. This is the problem of the bumping problem that we've continued to have is. We already looking at a central curriculum, the C S T process and summer school is easily an hour and a half. And so I'm just wondering. Is this something that we, that can be done in April or is this something that we need to schedule another meeting to, to do? Or I, I don't know. Suzanne, what are your? Thoughts hearing Susan's input about the process? Suzanne, what are, what are your thoughts about where this lands?
And I think I'm, I agree with Susan that, uh, probably should come to curriculum first and then kind of tease out what it is that would be really helpful to the whole school committee. Uh, and so, uh. You know, I'm not sure how we bring the four panels to the whole school committee, but you know, um, we certainly, we certainly panel four has been well represented. Uh, at the whole school committee, but we have not heard from one to three very, at all, I don't think, except through our own members. So I, yeah, if you could bring them here for panel three, uh, then we could think how to, how to bring that. All those good things, all those good thoughts and all that expertise to the whole school committee.
I mean, panel, the other, the other one that I would just emphasize is panel, so panels one and two really were working on a lot of the pieces around. Mental health and whole child wellness and educational equity. So, you know, those two kind of go together at this point. Um, and it really is around a lot of things that we've been talking about around mental health, around wellness, around whole child. Around a lot of the concerns that they have. Um, I mean, they, they're, they're also raising concerns around. What happens if, is, if R L A is really going to go away, like what happens, um, to kids, uh, who, who may not be able to be back in school for whatever reason. So. I think there are a lot of things that they would like to share with us as well, but I think those two can kind of go together.
So are you, is this a March thing that, that you're thinking or is this in April? Is this something we could do in April?
I mean, I, it's probably worth thinking about whether or not it needs to be in March for the budget purposes. I would not want to get sort of too far down the road. And have this not be part of the planning for next year. Um, because I do, you know, sometimes kind of, you know, the, the train kind of leaves the station and it's hard to kind of. Put new passengers on it. So I think because we've been talking about it for a while, just getting it in. Um, to the mix earlier is probably important.
I don't know, March is a long month. Maybe you can squeeze in a, you know, an hour for an extra meeting.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I'm just thinking that we have so much for the, for the regular, you know, but what we already have. I, I think we, but. I don't know if other school committee, uh, subcommittee members are. Are able and willing. I mean, I think that we schedule a separate, you know, a second meeting in the month of March dedicated, you know, and I'm like, say a one-hour meeting where I really think. You know, it'd be great to have an opportunity to hear from the panel, um, on, they've been doing a lot of work and so to sort of get. You know, their, sort of the report at the end of that work. Um. So are people amenable to, to setting up a second meeting in March that we could invite them to? Barbara, would you, are you able to, to make that commitment? Okay. And Helen's not here, but Susan, I'm assuming that you are also amenable to that.
Um, I will, maybe we do need to kind of combine panels one, two and three, um, for that meeting in an hour so that we can kind of get through. Anything that really does have any budgetary implications. Sooner rather than later. And then as, as Suzanne said, kind of suss out what needs to go to the full committee, but that might be a different way to just use the hour so that we can kind of get it all.
Okay.
Elevated.
So what I'm gonna, what I would like to propose as we're wrapping up, um, and I'm just looking quickly to see if I, oh, good. So. March sixteenth is the current school committee, I'm sorry, curriculum subcommittee meeting from four to five thirty. Um, I would like to just network with, um. With Robin and with Helen offline and just look at some potential dates because Tuesdays are, um. Also a day where capital meets. And so I'd like to just kind of coordinate with them and see, and then we could coordinate with some of the panel members, Susan. Perhaps you could help me with that when we get to that point.
Yeah, March ninth is when capital is, just so you know, um, as always, the, um, same day as the building commission.
Okay.
Building commissioner is up the second Tuesday of every month from six to nine. And so Helen schedules our capital meeting right before that. So. I'm ninety-nine percent sure unless it's moved that our capital meeting is from four to six on the ninth.
That's, that's what I have written down.
Okay, great. So, um, so I guess I would propose the, the week after the sixteenth, the March twenty-third, I would propose then for another, um. Meeting to invite the panels. You know, we would need to, we maybe talk some more about what that format might look like, Susan, and just, you know, like network with Michelle and just sort of. See how, you know, how do we condense key panels worth of work into, to a meeting, um, with the highlights, you know. Especially things that have budgetary implications.
And I think panel three has come up with a dozen slides or so, um, so they can also send that to us in advance and we can kind of maybe plan a little bit. That might be. Helpful. Um, and then I think the other thing is that panels. One and two, again, for people who weren't able to come, um, there was some of that conversation, um, that was presented at the, um, at panel four. But it needs to get presented to us. So panel four is great, but they, they shouldn't get, be getting the presentations. We, we need those. So. Okay. They, there are, there's materials, not like they would have to come up with it, I guess, is my point.
Okay, so I think I, I'm, I'm just sort of, my gut feeling is, you know, three panels in an hour might be maybe pushing the limits of, of. Feasibility, but you know, maybe our standard like four to five thirty. Might be, you know, probably more reasonable, um, to really do justice to, to the panels and the high, you know, what is the, what are the things that they think we need to know? Um, so maybe we'll, Robin will, will, can, I'll, can, will confirm, um, but I think. March twenty-third, um, from four to five thirty will invite, um, some of the members of panels one, two and three to come in, share their findings with us. And then. On our March sixteenth meeting. We will, um, plan to get an update on the essential curriculum, the C S T process and summer school plans. Um, and so Michelle or Meg or, or, you know, when you network with Casey, if there are any. Changes or additions or deletions to that, you know, we can always discuss that as well, but it's five thirty and I want to respect people's time. It's a back-to-back night for school committee. So those of you, um, still listening of our fellow attendees, please come and join us at six o'clock for the next party. So, um, thank you, everybody, and I'll see you in a little while. Thanks, everyone.